Call the meeting to order, Meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen. February 9th, 2016. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the Public Library. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our prayer, Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office, that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community, that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen.
Public comment period. We dedicate the first 10 minutes of our meeting to any public comments that any citizens would like to make. We ask them to confine their thoughts to three minutes so that other people can have an opportunity to speak. Were there any members of the public that would like to address the board this evening? There being none, we'll move on with the agenda. The Conservation Commission, acceptance of donated conservation land by Mass DOT. Can someone give us an update on this?
Yes.
Perhaps the town administrator in returning to his desk.
This is land that was taken by Mass DOT.
Please move the mic closer.
This was land taken by Mass DOT during the construction of the Route 44 project, and it's land that had to be set aside in conservation land. The Conservation Commission has already moved forward to accept this land contingent upon the Board of Selectmen officially adopting the land. So it's area, it's being donated by Mass DOT that will go into conservation land.
I move that we accept this donation of land.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the town administrator update. And we will lead, pardon me, did I miss something?
What happened to the appointment of election workers?
Oh, I'm sorry, appointment of election workers, yes. Thank you, Alan, for keeping me honest. Oh, yeah, the last meeting, I took a beating for having made a couple of errors that were pointed out to me by members of the board. 2016, appointment of new election workers. We have five that would like to be appointed. Susan Smith of 22 Williams Drive, Eileen Russo's of 13 Crystal Lake Drive, Susan Cole of 17 Lincoln Circle, Bridget Malin of 8 Commons Drive, and Eleanor O'Brien of 3-3 South Meadow Village. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we go ahead and appoint the five members, five people on the list.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now the town administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. The first item on our agenda tonight is for a status update from Steve Daley. Steve, would you like to come up and join us? Steve is heading up the consulting firm that won the bid for evaluating the possibility of combining facilities in DPW on a townwide basis. As you may recall, this was funded by the Community Compact Grant that Lieutenant Governor came down here and awarded the town. Steve has had the privilege of having many different meetings with all town, not all, but many town and school employees to get a full understanding of the needs of Carver and is going to be presenting his status update as to where he is tonight and taking any questions the board has. I do want to say that Steve and I did meet this afternoon with the new superintendent, Scott Neef, effective March 1st. Obviously, no decisions were made. We just wanted to bring him up to date as to what's being done so far. And as we move forward with this project, I'm sure the selectmen will be reaching out to the school committee to have additional meetings with the school committee to look to see if there's some common ground for the future operations of the town.
Excellent. With that, Steve.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to be here. I'm a senior consultant with Municipal Resources, Inc., out of Newmarket, New Hampshire. And we're very pleased to be involved in this project. It's an innovative project. It's also one that offers a lot of challenges. And I hope that what I have to present to you tonight shows a fairly clear path to a consolidation of the two departments and some consideration of other alternatives. If you'll gaze at the screen. Our assignment was to build on the recommendations of the 2014 feasibility study and evaluate alternative designs for consolidation along the way. We were also asked to look at decade down the road, and I think that we've done that. We've probably looked a couple of decades down the road. Also to identify other opportunities for cost avoidance and/or productivity improvements and consider fleet maintenance options as we went through this project. The 2014 study found that in both departments, most responsibilities are being met capably, that quality of work is generally satisfactory, workloads are above average, managers are wearing too many hats, administrative support is lacking, and the new fire department headquarters and elementary school will add space and technology requirements that the town does not have the capability of meeting at this point. The current responsibilities, and I apologize for the color, it looks very different on your TV than it does on my computer. Presenting the responsibilities of the two facilities departments are shown here. Generally speaking, what you'll see going through all of this is that the town's responsibility, excuse me, the town facilities responsibilities are in green and the school facilities responsibilities are in blue. I've divided it up into three basic categories: buildings, paved surfaces, and natural surfaces. The town, as you can see, has a multitude of buildings and their surrounding grounds that they take care of. And the school district has two schools, their administrative office and the school Very different colors. When we add public works to this chart, you'll see that the public works area has highways, parks, and the town fleet adding the rolling stock to the paved surfaces and the natural surfaces. You can see here that there's a shift in priorities of the responsibilities when we add public works. When we add in the school district's fleet, which reports to, which is under the supervision, rather, of the assistant superintendent, then we can run that entire bar across on the rolling stock to incorporate fleet maintenance. This represents pretty much the responsibilities that they all have at this point in time. When we look at the current staffing, and I apologize, I don't have the current numbers on the public work staffing for this chart, but the staffing for the facilities department and for the town is 2.3 people, 2.6, excuse me. And the staffing for the school district is considerably higher than that because of the square footage of buildings and grounds that they need to maintain.
What is it for the school, because I can't see the slides? It was 2.6.
I can't see it either.
For what? Groundskeepers, it's 1.0, maintenance workers, 2.0, custodians are 11.0.
For the school, because of the size of the buildings.
It's up in the range of 15.
We'll email these slides to everybody tomorrow.
That would be great.
Well, I was going to ask that later on.
Building on the 2014 report and recognizing the impending facilities director's retirement, we place the school district and town facilities maintenance under public works management to form a new public works and facilities department. This is generally what it would look like from the standpoint of responsibilities. This is the existing staff for the leadership under the town administrator, there's the public works and facilities director. This is as a first step. From there, we designated the school district facilities director as the DPW and facilities director. You can see the blue, the blue box moves over to be the director of public works and facilities, and designated the current public works superintendent as deputy director managing other than facilities maintenance. The two people who are in those positions now as the facilities director for the school district and the public work superintendent have different skill sets and different focuses in their experience. And as a result, we've lighted it up this way so that the public works director, public works and facilities director would focus primarily on buildings, maintenance, and custodial care, and the deputy director would focus on what are currently the public works responsibilities.
Thank you.
Adding to that, we've added a public works support staff to the town administrator's office and formed a joint oversight partnership between the town and the school district. That joint partnership would be executed by the town administrator and the superintendent. When we looked at the shared costs.
One second. Dick, this is Steve Daley.
Steve?
Hi, Steve.
Is putting together the facilities report for the joint school and town discussion.
Yep.
And he's just sharing with us some of the existing conditions of the departments.
I'm sorry I'm late. I looked at the agenda this afternoon on the computer and I missed the 6:30. No one's saying anything.
So when we looked at the shared cost of the two departments, we've combined the budgets, the staffing budgets, and left the expense budgets off to the side in order to make this a clear and simple calculation. The key elements to look to are the town facilities director salary, the administrative support salary, public works director salary, and to consider collective bargaining alignment costs. As you know, there are two different unions involved here, so that those contracts would have to be brought into line. That would require bargaining. When we add up all the current combined costs, it is just short of $800,000. If we delete the town's facilities director position, it drops to $780,000. Then we add back in the support, the administrative support staff at just under 15, and an increase of 15% to the new public works director position of just under $14,000. We end up with a total of 808,000, 809,000, a minor increase of only $9,000. This approach does not cut cost, as you can see, but the increase in cost is fairly nominal, and the benefits that would come from that we'll discuss as we move forward here. The positives in combining the departments this way is first, it allows the school district leadership to focus on education, not having to spend their time and energy and distraction, be distracted by the care and maintenance of the buildings and the grounds that belong to the schools. It will also provide for setting uniform standards across all town facilities for care and maintenance. It will allow for a coordinated work plan on an annual basis with periodic check-ins among the leaders. And it will also provide for a segregated and insulated operating budget if the operating budget is put into the shared cost category, as has been discussed. The aggregation of demand for outside services and supplies can lead to savings, and it will certainly lead to efficiency in the procurement activities of the town, where right now the school district and the town are doing the same procurements separately. So it would literally cut the amount of procurement effort in half. Further, it provides for dedicated administrative support, where there's no administrative support for either facilities department or the public works department at this time. And it would develop the current leadership through education training and support through mentoring to bring them up to fit into a succession plan where, as one retires, the other would step in preferably to take their place. Also, another benefit of this that's not listed here is that currently there is no backup, no number-two person for public works, there's no number-two person for facilities here in the town, and there's no number-two person for facilities at the school district. So by combining this operation this way and having the director of public works and facilities and the deputy director work in concert with each other, they can back each other up and fill in for each other during the other's absence. And then finally, a positive is that there's a nominal cost increase. On the negative side, yes, it's an additional cost. And also, it may require school board consent, it also may require a town meeting approval, and it may require special legislation, depending on which way you approach this. And finally, as I said earlier, the collective bargaining agreements have to be reconciled, and they have to be bargained to that point. A footnote on the school board consent, one section of Chapter 71 allows towns and school committees or school departments to jointly provide services to themselves. And among those are maintenance of their facilities. That statute requires that the school board vote in favor of doing that. There's another section of Chapter 71 that mandates that towns provide for schools and provide for adequate facilities for educating the children in town. It also says that the town can decide whether the town or the school department maintains and cares for those facilities. That's the reference to a town meeting decision. And then if the obstacles that those two elements present appear to be more difficult than you wish to overcome them, you always have the option of going the special legislation route to have a special act put in place specific to Carver. Looking beyond the 2014 feasibility study, other approaches that we considered are the town contracting with the school district for custodial and maintenance services, or the school district contracting with the town. The contract would be a memorandum of understanding, and how you work out the budgeting and cost of that is, you would have to work out. But the school district servicing the town is more viable because they have the people to do it, they have the skill and expertise to do it, and they have the depth in their cadre to be able to bring your people into their group and do the job for both sides. The school district buildings are larger, more complex, they require a larger workforce with greater expertise, as we all know. But to pause for a second, I don't think I can overemphasize the technical requirements of the two new buildings that you're building now. The fire station is going to have its own set of technical issues. The HVAC systems are going to be climate-controlled, they're going to be zoned, they'll be computer-controlled and that sort of thing. The school that you're building is going to be far more complex than that, and you need to anticipate that and get people trained to be able to deal with it. Custodial services divided to both entities by the school district, maintenance by the town, works for the custodial because of the expertise of that crew, but not so much for the maintenance, because the town's maintenance side is not really capable, from a manpower standpoint, to be able to take care of the school district buildings. Contracting custodial services of town and school district or both to the private sector, it works for the town and night cleaning for the school district, but it doesn't work for the schools during the day and for certain town incidents where some custodians need to remain on duty to be able to deal with minor emergencies or things that break that need to get fixed at that point in time. It does foster competition and likely better pricing and private sector job creation in the area. It also affords the ability to change contractors based on performance, and I know we've all been through that experience, we've had bad contractors and we changed them. It's a lot easier to do that than it is to deal with staff that you have as employees. And then it removes the benefit costs after employment and the other general benefit costs of the town and the school employees. And then it lessens the labor relations workload. These are all positive things we're contracting out, and it's a viable alternative. Other approaches that we considered have to do with the fleet maintenance. You have two facilities where you maintain fleets. One is the school bus facility, the other is the public works operation. If you were to split the roles of those two facilities such that the school bus facility was handling school buses and other four-wheeled vehicles, which are all generally light vehicles, they can do that very well and very efficiently. And at that point, you would leave, you could leave the heavy maintenance to the public works facility, where those mechanics are used to dealing with heavy trucks, fire apparatus, and that sort of thing. We take that one step further, and you can employ an oversight model for maintenance of the fleets with the fleet maintenance manager being one of the current employees and the public works director overseeing that operation. And in the end, a possible ultimate outcome would maximize integration, buildings, paved surfaces, natural surfaces, and fleets all managed through a single department that would be jointly overseen by the superintendent and the town administrator. When you look forward to implementation, this can be set in motion this spring for a launch in FY '17 or '18. There's a lot of work to do before you get to that point, obviously. And the matters that need to be addressed are school board concurrence, town meeting decision and/or special legislation, budget reorganization regarding townwide services, I believe you call it a shared services budget, and bargaining the impact of changes regarding employee retention, pay, benefits, and contractual rights, staff transfers and hirings, and then relocation of equipment and staff. It's a lot to take on. It's a doable project. I think it benefits the town to consider it, and I think moving forward, you will find that you're, under the joint management of the superintendent of schools and the town administrator, with the right people in the right leadership positions, that your quality of work will not diminish, in fact, it'll probably improve, your efficiency will significantly improve, and overall, without calculating it now, I think you're going to see at least no change in cost, if not a possible reduction, because of the aggregation of demand on supplies and services and the single procurement effort as opposed to a double procurement effort that you have now.
Questions from the board?
Yes, I do, just a quick one. In the slide, you mentioned that we may need town approval, we may need school committee approval, but then when you were verbally speaking, you pretty much emphasized that Chapter 71 requires both. So is it really a may or is it a definite, that we would have to get school committee and the town to approve this as well?
I don't think that you'll need both to do it. If the school committee is amenable to forming this partnership, you and they can enter into a memorandum of understanding that would put it together. It's important to remember, though, that the school committee under that statute can back out of that agreement at any time. So that really doesn't take you far down the road.
Right.
With any guarantees. But the use of the word "may" is sort of a consulting hedge, because we're not lawyers and you should really consult with your town council about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alan?
Along that line, would it be possible if the town, we decided to go along with this and do this consolidation, if we put it on a ballot question, a binding ballot question, would that circumvent having it, you know, let's say the school committee gets, say to say, "No, we're not going to do it," would that be one way to get around that, providing, you know, that way we'd get the support of the entire town? It'd be actually more representative by doing it that way than having it approved by town meeting?
Sorry to say this, but you have to consult with your own lawyer.
Check with attorneys, okay.
Ron, if I may?
Yep. I could give you a lot of opinions, but they're my opinions, they're...
Fair enough. Sarah?
Well, I was just going to say, I think, you know, let's not jump the gun and assume that the school committee is going to go against everything that is proposed here. And I'm sure you know this, but when you said the DPW department and the facilities department and the school facilities department heads have no backup, the DPW does have a foreman.
Yes.
I don't, you know, I mean, it's only one department, and I didn't know if that figured into your equation or not.
It does, but I think that that is a weaker backup than you should have, especially if the departments are consolidated.
Right. Okay.
Nick?
I was just curious to know if you may have spoken about this, but what other towns, and do you know any numbers or anything? Anybody that has gone from where we're at to where you're talking or suggesting that we could go?
I know that there have been several towns that have done that. I think probably the best success story is the town of Andover. And it's no coincidence that Joe Pianadossi, who did the 2014 feasibility study, was the facilities director in Andover when they combined those departments. And it was his skill, expertise, and dedication to the job that...
Made it work.
Pretty much made it successful. And if you met Joe, you can understand that he's...
I did, I met him.
He's a very congenial person. He's not argumentative.
He put on that presentation, and, yep. Are there any other that you might, that's a pretty high-end town.
Yes, it is. But so is Carver.
You may think so.
Quality town.
I live here. We present that, but we got a lot of working people here that aren't really in a high-income category, you know?
I don't think that makes a difference. I think your dedication to your idea is what counts.
Yeah. But are there any other smaller towns?
I would have to get back to you on that. We've been doing some research, but I'm not up to speed on it.
Okay. All right.
I think, sorry, Alan?
I was just wondering, you said, basically, you know, I may be paraphrasing here, that basically that the managers right now have a tremendous workload. Are they able, under the current setup, to best... Are they, are they able, under the current setup, to best utilize their time, or are they spending a lot of time doing things that other people should be doing?
They're doing things right now that are overloading them from a time and a workload standpoint, and they're doing things that they don't need to be doing, but they're, you could say that they're doing things that other people should be doing, but you don't have the other people to do that.
But that would be part of why we'd want to go to this, so we can get the personnel in place, so the proper people are doing the proper jobs.
Yes, and the facilities director at the school department is probably the biggest example of that. He's spread very thin and, you know, doing the entire alphabet for a job, and he's going to burn out.
I think, thank you for the presentation this evening, and I know, Michael, you said you sat down the three, along with the new superintendent, Scott Neef, which I think is a good start to be working together. I think our next step is to contact the school committee and we might ask you to come back for another presentation if you'd be amenable. And if we could have the slides emailed out to us and if we could simultaneously get them over to the school committee so that they can begin the review. I think obviously the best way to proceed or the ideal result would be if everyone's in agreement, and again, I was a little surprised that it's, there's no, that the savings wasn't bigger.
Yeah.
But I am impressed by the efficiency side of this. I mean, there were a couple of issues coming in, was you wanted to see increased efficiency and hopefully some cost savings. Now, the cost savings, as you indicate, maybe they come a little further down the road, but if the efficiencies are there and our people are able to do a better job, then the town is getting a better bang for the bucks that we are spending. So, it's, you know, we're going to be going through this process and as I say, we want to, the ideal situation would be for the schools and the town to be in agreement on moving forward.
And I like how, you know, having the school committee get this presentation also, so we're all starting in the same place.
Right.
Again, transparency.
Exactly, so, Michael?
Just a couple of points that I want to make, and one is to emphasize Sarah's comment on the backup that we have for the DPW. And, you know, with the DPW, we do have a foreman who stands in when John goes on vacation, which is a rare occurrence, what he does. But I would tell you, in my experience, one of the things that alarmed me is when I got to know Dave Sekentoff and understood the structure around him, he's a phenomenal and exceptional employee for the town and he does things that most directors couldn't even think of doing. The problem with that is that it is, he's doing it and he works around the clock and he, he doesn't complain, he does whatever it takes to get things done, but he is working himself to the bone and there is no backup plan and we would not be able to replace him. So I look at from a structure standpoint is that if Dave decides to go someplace else, we're, we're in trouble. He's not looking to do that, but if he did, what is our backup plan? We don't have one. And, and he's too critical to use. So part of this piece that is here allows for that one and two person to help cross-train each other and be able to back up for that. And that is a huge advantage for a town that also creates a succession planning too, should one retire. So, you know, that, that is of concern. The other thing is that, and when I worked in Cohasset, we had a joint facilities department that the superintendent and I jointly managed. And we had a facilities director that would oversee the cleaning of the buildings and the maintenance and so forth. And that's what's proposed here too, is that this is not a control issue, it's not who's in charge, it's the superintendent and the town administrator jointly oversee the, the professional expert who's managing things. And what the town has stated numerous times through our goals and objectives is maintaining our infrastructure is critically important to the town. I mean, look at us, we're building a new fire station, we're building a new elementary school, we're building a new police station, all in the tune of five years. That's a lot of development in any town and, you know, maybe we could have thought about that a little bit better and planned those so those things ran in succession versus all at once. So again, this, this just...
Could have if we passed a school ten years ago.
It would have cost more money than that. So this just allows for better support staff and these, taking down the barriers and just say, "We are maintaining all the infrastructure together, it's set aside in a segregated fund that can't be used for anything else but for maintaining the facilities." And that's, that's how you make sure you get proper maintenance. The facilities budget is always the easiest to cut during a downturn, but it's always the most expensive to replace in the future.
And, and I think it should be mentioned, by the way, that Dave Seidenhoff and John Woods have an excellent working relationship, so I don't want anyone to have the impression that the, there's a lack of cooperation between the, the schools and the DPW. I think they work wonderfully together. The idea is that how can we enhance that relationship and make it more efficient? So, you know, we're, we're moving forward with this, we will do so on a calculated basis, and I think the next step is to get this in our hands so we can review it some more. We can get back to Steve with questions that we may have as, as they come up and schedule something with the school committee so that we can have perhaps a joint presentation focused just on this some evening. And then I think it would be important to hear some input from, you know, the new superintendent and, and Michael and their, their ongoing discussion, so. Thank you very much, appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight and all the work that you've put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Is it me or the mic's louder this evening?
Yeah.
Something, they were almost singing a minute ago.
I turned the...
Oh, I mean, you know that...
I think part of it also is that we're trying to, there have been some complaints that we're not being picked up well on TV at home, so...
The poll hearing scheduled for seven-ten, I just wanted to point out.
Okay, so being seven-ten, I should go to the poll hearing, is your suggestion? We have a bunch of chairs on this staff. Being seven-ten, let's go to the poll hearing with N-Star and Verizon. Let's see, do I have a poll hearing document here?
Yes.
Oh, the notice of two abutters?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Please identify yourself and...
Good evening, Karen Ray from Eversource Energy.
And what can we do for you this evening?
Our petition is to, for relocations of eleven polls and two new polls to facilitate the road widening project for Route fifty-eight. MassDOT has started the plans and all of the parties have met out there on numerous occasions and agreed that these, these relocations are what we need to get the job done out there.
And when you identify all the parties, you're referring to...
Verizon, Eversource, MassDOT, and Town Carver.
Okay, so that, so all four have come to agreement?
Correct.
And the abutters, obviously.
Excuse me?
And the abutters, obviously.
Yes, and the abutters relocations.
Okay. All right, are there any abutters present that wanted to address this issue this evening? There being none? What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion.
Close the hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, all right, I guess we'll close the hearing now, given that there's no public What's the pleasure of the board now?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you very much.
Thank you. You too.
That was a tough presentation.
All right, we'll move back to the town administrator update and hope for some brevity in his comments. We'll go to the bonding update.
I'm going to turn it over to our Mrs. Maroni, who was prepared to give an update on this.
I can remember that.
Further direction to the chairman.
That was funny.
So Ms. Maroni will give us the bonding update?
Yes, she will.
Okay.
Not take more than forty-five minutes, I think you said?
No, I think you can shorten it.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, the bonding report, yes, I said an hour and a half.
Yeah, when I sent the email?
Yes.
He's just, yeah.
Did you want to give us the highlights, Helen, or no?
If you bothered to look at it, it does have a lot of past years' information, so that was kind of interesting to go through.
Okay, we need to move this along, Mr. Chair.
Again, the brief comments from the town administrator.
The brief comments from the town administrator is, you have in front of us our preliminary official statement that will be sent out to the rating agents, I'm sorry, to the bonding market on February twenty-fifth. On February twenty-third, we're going to have our ratings call with, with the standard of pores to determine what our bond rating's going to be. This bond is going to be for thirty million dollars. Of that thirty million dollars, twenty million is going to be for the new elementary school and the remaining ten million dollars is going to be paying off the bond anticipation note for the fire station, I'm sorry, for the fire engines and also for the construction of the fire station. And I believe we will have our awards back sometime in the first week of March, which we will then ask the Board of Selectmen to approve. I am anticipating that we will beat our projections when we went forward to have the new elementary school approved. And we will try, and we're shooting for trying to get a number that's going to be ten percent below what the estimate was the town meeting approved. And again, that has nothing to do with the cost of the building, that just has to do with what the payments will be made by the individual taxpayers. And keep in mind, the Board of Selectmen already approved a hundred thousand dollars per year coming out of our solar project, which already reduces that down by six percent.
Just a quick question, Michael, so you just said that that's not the cutting the cost of the school itself, but rather cutting...
The cost of borrowing, the cost of money.
Okay.
So the project is still going to be a forty-nine million dollar project, of that we're borrowing, the town shares twenty-three million dollars. We believe that the estimate that we provided to the townspeople when they voted for the school was based upon borrowing twenty-three million dollars at a particular rate.
Okay.
That particular rate was based upon what we thought the market would be. I'm anticipating we're going to do better than that, which is going to make our cost of borrowing lower, which we'll be able to come back and go to the townspeople and say, "Listen, you approve this, we're ten percent lower."
And again, to the point that Michael made earlier, is that we advertised one thing, since then, when we added the hundred thousand dollars of the pilot programs, that has already reduced the cost that we advertised to the public by six percent.
Good, right, just wanted to be real clear about that. Thank you.
Continue on, sir, in your brevity.
Brevity's over.
Well, no, your DOR report update.
Oh, are we done with the bonding? Oh, okay, no other questions? No other questions? Just one last...
There seems to be some anxiousness to get back and see the results from New Hampshire this evening.
Yes, Sarah.
Okay, okay. Again, just one last point for the bonding, the debt, the level debt will be the same, it's a levered, leveled debt structure for the school, so payments will be the same over those twenty-five years. Okay, DOR report based upon best practices and recommendations for Carver's long-term financial sustainability. As you may recall, when we had our audit presentation, there were some findings that the town had with its financial structure. I, I think the discussion revolved around that this is not the first time the town has had similar type findings with our financial structure, it's actually happened over potentially the last three or plus treasurer collectors. And with that, Department of Revenue has come in and they've interviewed and met with all of the financial department heads and number-two people in each department, including meeting with the school. As part of their analysis, they are coming up with a recommendation, I'm going to pass these slides around.
No, we haven't got a formal report from them yet.
No, we have not, and what I'm going to be presenting, and part of the reason why I'm presenting this is the timing, given the budget has to be submitted to the Finance Committee this Thursday. So, based upon the review that we have with DOR, I'm going to be including some of their recommendations that will be coming out of it. Again, we have to wait for the final report, it has to go through a quality checks, quality assurance process at DOR, so we don't have the final report, but I'm giving you a preliminary read on it. And I'm setting up the budget so that it would incorporate all solutions in the budget that's going to be proposed. And then over the next thirty days, Mr. Chairman, we can then begin to finalize the, the final scenario.
Okay.
So, if you look on page one of these five pages of slides, this just lays out the finding, the reporting structure, if you will, for the key departments in moving forward. I think when, at one point, there were nineteen direct reports that I was managing, we're trying to focus these into different groups.
So this is, this is...
The new.
The new.
This is new, yes.
And when I see Director of DPW and Townwide Infrastructure, that's not referring to a shared facilities?
That is correct.
That's, 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 we're not there yet, so that's just what already we have?
Correct, because what we did do two years ago is we did combine town facilities and town DPW under John, led with Jerry reporting to him. So that is what you see. All right, on page two of the slides, one of the items that has come out loud and clear is, and it's Carver's, not unlike many other towns...
Excuse me, and just to be clear, this is basically feedback you've gotten from the DOR on a preliminary basis, subject to their actual report coming out, is that an accurate representation?
So two functions that are not being accounted for in our town government on a formal basis is procurement. We've known we've had some procurement issues in the town. Now, we've had several employees go get certified in their procurement, but they're all doing it as a component of their job, there's no central focus of procurement. The same thing ties into with human resource coordinator is that in today's age with labor relations and all the different labor laws, is that is taking up more time than one would generally have allowed in their, their normal workday efforts, that it becomes a position where you need to spend a day or two per week looking at that. This is going to be one of the new positions that's going to be proposed, is that we come in with a new procurement purchasing coordinator. And with that, Elaine has been doing a good amount of the procurement in the town, this will allow her to assist in overseeing someone doing it on a more full-time basis and helping with the DPW and the facilities, as you heard in the reports, and what exists today. And that time that she would be freeing up doing some of the procurement could be then focused on human resources and being the human resource coordinator. So what you see being sent up here is to, to modify Elaine's position into an assistant town administrator position slash human resource coordinator, so that that functionality would be vested in, in, in our department. And then hiring a new procurement purchasing coordinator. So again, I'm going to just zip through these because as we get into the budget discussions, we'll be going over those, but I wanted to share some preliminary feedback, which is how the budget's being, being built.
Excuse me, do you have a sense of when we might get the actual report?
I, well, let's put it this way, I'd hoped to get it for the last two Fridays, that got delayed. I, I know it's close, I'd hope it's this Friday, but I think it should be next week, no later. And again, it'll be in time for our thirty-day review process.
And when we get it, will they be coming in to formally present it?
Yes.
Okay.
We will incorporate that.
I mean, if that involves a special meeting, we all know it's budget season, so if we have to set up a special meeting, we can do that.
I also want to emphasize that the DOR has been in discussions and explored all these alternatives with our auditor too. So it's not just DOR, they're dealing with our auditor who's, you know, understands the town for the last few years. Okay, on page three, and again, what I'm showing you are changes in the current organizational charts. On page three, and this ties back into the Director of Planning, Environment, and Permitting, we all stated that we would review the progress of the department and then explore alternatives if any changes need to be made. And as part of that self-assessment, there are a couple of things that are being proposed here. First is that I want to emphasize that Robert Tinkum announced that he's going to be retiring this summer, and we're going to be looking at the options of looking at maybe a part-time health agent, maybe consulting health agent, or maybe looking at sharing services with one of our, or more of our budding towns to satisfy that need.
I think we've spoken about the fact that Halifax and Plimpton already share a regional health agent, and certainly it's a time to explore something of that nature.
Halifax and Plimpton?
Halifax and Plimpton, yeah.
So right now, we have currently set up in that department, we have a full-time office coordinator, which is Deb Deneem, and then we have two part-time administrator coordinators. And what we have found, plus we have another third person that we have on a temporary basis to, to assist. to, to assist. What we have identified is, given the complexity and the vast amount of permits coming in in that department, is there becomes a point where you have too many part-time employees. And then the one full-time spends more of her time managing those people than getting some of the work done, just because of coordinating schedules and making, everything has a timeline to make. So if someone's in for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and they don't finish it Wednesday, well, then, you know, somebody else has to pick that ball up on Thursday, Friday to move it. So what this is proposing is that we move one of those two administrative coordinators into a full-time role, which would then leave us with 2.5 administrative people for the department. And we would make sure that they were appropriately compensated for the work that they were doing. And again, this is experience. It's learned from, you know, there's been great success with the department in merging it together. But administratively, we have put a large burden on the staff that needs to be addressed, and this is what this is proposing to do. So that is the change that you see there.
If I could just ask, on the health agent, since we know he's leaving and we aren't sure exactly whether regionalization or what, for planning for next year, isn't the plan to do, hire someone part-time and then maybe outsource the inspections or something, since we're not, we don't want to commit to either, you know, I mean, the options are, we can hire a full-time health agent, go back to the same thing we're doing now, regionalize or something in between. So while we're in the process of making that decision, we're going to go with a part-time and out, plus an outsource, or what is the plan?
I don't think over the next 30 days, we've been in a position to say, yes, we want to turn that into another full-time position. And again, I'm using the 30 days because that's the budget window, is that we would budget an appropriate sum of funds to outsource the, the position or use part-time neighboring communities to come in and fill it. And, and right now, what Meg and I are carrying in that budget line item is in essence 60% of today's cost for salary. That's what we're going to budget in there until we can figure this out.
Okay.
For what the long-term solution is. So we're going to look for a temporary solution, and I appreciate that Robert Tinkum has given us this notice. It allows us to plan for this versus two weeks' notice, which would be unacceptable. So this is, this is a good time for us to reevaluate how that function, work with the Board of Health, explore what their needs are, and figure out what the next evolution of the Health and Human Services component of that function needs to be.
And I guess that was my point, is I didn't want to rush to judgment in terms of what we should do. Let's take the time, explore it, and, you know, and again, you know that I'm a big fan of regionalization and, and, you know, I'm hoping that that's one of the solutions we can explore, which gives the town all the service it needs at a reduced cost to the town, so.
Did, you've met with the town administrator from Halifax and somebody from Plimpton on the regional idea.
Mm-hmm.
Did you gentlemen touch that area or no?
It was mentioned, because I, Robert did show me that he was looking to leave, so I let them know that we do have an anticipated retirement. Now it's official.
So we can hopefully have a foot patway into the door there.
Yes. And, and, you know, the challenge right now is that all the towns are in budget mode, so to get that dialogue is difficult at the detailed level it needs to be, which I think is why the chairman suggested, let's not lock something in until we can work through that process. So that's a change. And the last two slides, four and five, let me start on four. It's in the bottom right, the four is kind of in the box. I apologize for that. What DOR is coming out at, and again, they're going to, you'll be able to read this in their report, is that in looking at best practices of, you know, similar-sized towns and also towns slightly larger than us, and given some of the financial makeup of the town, is you're seeing a trend towards having a, a finance director kind of oversee multiple departments versus three or four departments that operate autonomously of one another. I will tell you, there is nothing in our town finance departments that operates autonomously, except for the structure. Because when a bill comes in from the collector, you know, it gets processed through the accountant. And when we go out to put out tax bills, those are done through the assessing, which then goes to the collector, which then means that the collectors and the treasurers receipts balance. So nothing is a standalone, but the departments are. And the other component, you've heard me mention this before, is there is a difficulty in finding experienced municipal finance people in the marketplace. So what this is calling for, and I'm going to start with, it upgrades our town accountant and has that position as the finance director. And, and again, she would continue to report to myself as the chief administrative officer slash financial officer of the town, who I report to the Board of Selectmen, is we look at the assistant accountant and be looking at adding a part-time position under the assistant accountant as a finance assistant. That would be a new position that is needed no matter what, just because of the amount of billing and, and work that goes through the department. So that's on the left side. I'm going to jump over to the right side, the assessing office manager and the finance Our, our principal assessor, Elaine Blanchard, is also going to be retiring later. Ellen. I'm sorry, Ellen Blanchard, is going to be retiring later this summer. And DOR is, in their review, has determined that many towns are moving to outsourcing their, their numerical, their quantitative functionality of the assessing department to, to consultants that do this on a regular basis for towns and also for the Department of Revenue. So this, in essence, calls for completely restructuring that department and eliminating, in essence, all of the positions, but then coming back and creating a, a one and a half positions. And the first would be is to create the assessing office manager. This is currently D right now, and this would, you know, because of the additional responsibility, move this from a grade four to a grade five, which is the same grade that the assistant accountant is and the assistant treasurer collector as a, as a grade five within that department. And then creating a finance assistant as a part-time position reporting to that. And Ellen and I also met with one of the consultants who has our software in town, PK Associates. They do this for numerous towns. They do from soup to nuts. They take care of all the administrative components in some of the smaller towns. So they just are the assessing office. They just don't have a home in the town hall. To other towns more like our size that have an administrative function that can prepare the property records and be the liaison with the community for the public communication, customer service, but yet, once the packet is done and that's sent to the company, which goes out and does the inspection, does the evaluation, prepares all the Department of Revenue forms, and then transmits that to the other finance departments in the town and the DOR as appropriate. So that part would all be, be outsourced.
So we would end up not having an actual assessor like Ellen on board?
Correct.
And does this work out to be revenue neutral when all is said and done?
Both scenarios that I'm going to get to turn out to be revenue neutral. And, and actually, there's little savings with both of them, whether it's on page four or page five. So either one of these are not going to have a cost. So again, that's what we're looking at from the assessing department. The treasurer collectors department, in this scenario, there would be no change on page four as to would it currently exist today. If I, if you can flip to the last page, which is page five, again, on the bottom right in that box, is this also shows the finance director. It also shows the assistant accounting office staying the same as previously discussed, and the assessing office being, staying the same as previously discussed. But what this does do is this explores the possibility of bifocating the collector slash treasurer position into two positions versus just one position. Because they are two different roles and functions, it may be the structure, and again, we'll discuss this over the next month, it may be the structural need that would help Carver propel itself to avoid some of the findings we, we historically have gotten out of this office. So this would create a person responsible for being the collector and a person responsible for being the treasurer. However, those positions would cross-support the other. So if someone takes a week off, say the collector takes a week off of vacation, well, the treasurer would be the assistant collector as well, so that if that person is out for a week, they can fill in for the basic responsibilities for that position and vice versa. So that would be one of the changes that's looked at in alternative number five. I would say that just my, my, my comment on this is alternative four, I'm sorry, the alternative on page four we just looked at, which is like we have today for the treasurer collector, you know, is something that I would probably normally recommend, reporting to a finance director if everything was properly functioning. But it may be that this option where you split the two positions may be better for Carver in the long run to have the duty segregated, all reporting to a finance director, which may allow better management and, and, and work productivity out of this. Having said all that, that component of the treasurer collector, you know, could, we could look at trying it split for a few years. If that works, great. If it doesn't, you can always roll it back up into, to one department. So based upon the personnel, based upon the level of effort, based upon issues that are happening in the community, you can combine them or separate them. Neither one of those would have a drastic impact on the budget, and it allows us to better work with our staff's capabilities to, to help the town out.
I noticed at the bottom it says finance assistants, so it'd be a part-time. So there'd be like two part-time people for each? Is that the, what the, by saying is plural?
So each box is one part-time position. The, the reason why the assistants is that the intent is, is they're all cross-trained, they're all being a grade three. So that if there was a need because of a quarterly thing where you needed to have somebody move out of the collector's office into the assessing or whatever it may be for a week or two, you could allow that to happen. It's the same model we've done, not only in our office, but also in the permitting office, too, just to have people cross-trained, that you can go back and forth. That's why it was called assistants.
So DOR is proposing these two alternatives?
Yes.
For the finance director, will they be, well, I guess we can ask them when they're here, as to if they have a firm recommendation between the two, based on their analysis, so, okay.
And the final position that's being contemplated in the budget process, and I don't have a slide for it, is for the fire department. As you've known, for the last five or six years, if not longer, Chief Weston, given the work, he, the workload that he has and his deputy has, been looking to have a new assistant deputy chief. And what's going to be proposed in his budget is that we fund a position for half the year so that that new position would start on January 1st. And then the following fiscal year would be funded on a, on a full-time basis. This allows for that to be slowly absorbed into the budget, which has taken a big hit year one. And it also fits with some of the, the transition that's happening right now with building a new station, and it would happen after the new station was up and running.
Right now, we have just the two full-time employees within the fire department.
Correct.
You know, though, we had previously, Mark Weston was part of that administrative team.
Yeah. Well, they, they never got rid of the position when he retired.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, is the two people we have now have taken, took over his work in addition to their own.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Basically, what happened was when Deputy Weston retired, we didn't, the fire department did not do away with the position. The fire chief, Craig at the time, said, look, we can go without one for a year or two. Because what happened was Deputy Weston's function was training, and Deputy Jermaine was more code enforcement. Well, since Mark left, Eric has, all that has fallen to Eric, and plus he's picked up a lot more. He does most of the grant writing for the fire department, and the town, you know, will save lots and lots of money for, you know, basically for all the money we've gotten in grant, grants from the fire department. So this is a position that's been on the books for quite a while, just hasn't been staffed or funded, and it's really the time, you know, the time has come for us to go ahead and get back to that, so we have two deputies and a chief.
And we're burning out two quality guys.
Exactly.
Okay. You know, I just have to comment on that because, you know, what I have learned over the last couple of years here in Carver is that Carver is not robust in staff. And you have a lot of dedicated people, whether it's the chief and the deputy, whether it's Dave Siegantoff, whether it's John Woods, that put their heart and soul and take full responsibility for the job. And they put themselves in harm because they, they overwork themselves. And, and that's what we need to, to take a look at as we move through this budget process. And these are needs that need to be done. Carver's growing. It will continue to grow, hopefully slow, but it will grow, and you have to accommodate for situations like this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the FY17 budget executive summary.
Okay. What I'm passing out right now is the state figures for the town, which is showing what we received in FY15 was a net state aid of $11 million down on the bottom on the left. From 15 to 16, that dropped by $68,000. And then in the budget this year, we are still below FY15 levels, although it went up $31,000. It is still below FY15 numbers. And I think, and that's the net state aid. What I also want to emphasize in the very bottom line is the net education part of state aid has dropped two years in a row. First year, it was $131,000, and then the next year, this year, it's additional $25,000 off of that number.
And the state's in a big financial hole itself, on top of everything else, so that... Okay. So the good news, then?
So with that, I am passing out updated pro forma. The Board of Selectmen approved this document, subject to changes that I'm going to mention, back in October, when you establish the town's budget number and the school's budget number. And this is the blue column for FY17. The school's budget number was 22.26 million, and the town's number is $9,407,000. And, you know, that is the budget number that I have to work within, even given the staffing changes that I've talked about. Those numbers are not going to be changing tonight, based upon what I'm going to be discussing. I do want to emphasize again that we, through the actions the board took, we've knocked $12 million off of our OPED liability through some of the reforms we've done, from a $55 million accumulated deficit to now only $43 million. The changes on this document is in the fourth line item for new growth, personal property, equipment and solar. That number has gone up by $130,000 to $266,000. Because solar is personal property, because it's equipment, it goes right into the capital stabilization fund. So those are the two, we had more revenue coming in after this was approved. Of that $100,000, you voted to go in to pay off the, the debt structure. As a result, I needed to have this, this chart updated, and I would ask that you approve the update. And again, that is focused on the, the solar project.
So essentially, then, there's, we've used $100,000. What, well, we, what was the initial figure that was in there?
The initial figure that was in there was $136,000.
Okay. So really, it's just the, adding the, well, about $130,000, as you indicated. All right. And so you're looking for us to essentially approve this as our new working numbers?
Correct. Because this allows me to set the capital number.
Okay. Does someone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Well, I'm just, I'm not against the idea completely, but on the other hand, we've been looking tonight at some, funding some new positions.
Yep.
And by taking all of this, you know, and applying it in this particular way, we're taking it out of operating budgets. So I didn't know what the plan... So I didn't know what the plan was then to fund the new positions or if there is one.
I'm going to quote a comment that the chairman made earlier to begin with M or something that you mentioned before the meeting about how we work out the capital budget.
Oh geez. Essentially, I believe, aren't we, don't we have to put new growth, personal property into?
We don't have to put all of it in. It's been a practice, but it's not, we're not required to.
Well, we're not, you can change your policies at any time, but the policy stays you put it all in until we get to 100% of what our target number is. So let me address your question. Here's the good news. By putting this in here, Carver will be at 67% of our target number. So we're getting closer to 100% of our target number, which is 10% of revenue. We talked here about putting $130,000 of new revenue coming in. A hundred of that, Sarah, you've already spent on the debt for the school. So really what that leaves is $30,000. That $30,000, in my estimation, isn't a number that you should back away from your policies right now. If all of a sudden that was $700,000, you know, or something that came in once before, then maybe that's when you start assessing that. But these small incremental growths allows us to fund the capital projects. And what I will be showing you next is that our capital, we still don't have enough money to do everything we need to do. So, you know, on one hand, you only have so much revenue and you have to figure out where more appropriately goes. And at this point, we have policies to say that.
Getting back to Sarah's comment though, you feel even by leaving all this money into the personal property, new growth, and not pulling some of it back in the operating budget, that you can still work the operating budget?
Yeah, that's the question, question mark.
That you can still make the operating budget work even with the changes that are being proposed?
We will do our best.
What he's trying to get me to say is, I earlier referenced the fact that he's a miracle worker when it comes to these numbers and he's trying desperately to get me to say that. So now set it so we can move forward. Alan, please save me.
Okay, yeah, to save you.
So I have to just believe, I guess?
Yeah, that's right.
Robbie?
I said, "I have to just believe." I mean, I want to know how it's going to work. I can't just accept things on faith. I mean.
Well, I mean, I think as we-
I'm not saying that, you know, that that may not be true, but.
Well, when we looked at this, and again, just, I want to make sure everyone understands it. The numbers you have in here are operating on, are already, are inclusive of the new design that we just went through or not?
The numbers here are just capital numbers. They don't affect the operating budget at all.
No, the-
I think what he's getting at-
No, I'm talking about the operating budget.
They take away from the operating-
Oh, yes, these numbers show the new design, the operating budget is the same as it was before.
So the 9.4 plus million goes ahead and it takes into account these changes?
No, the 9.4 didn't change from before. The number that changed is-
No, what I'm getting at is your, the structural changes-
Some of the departments is included in this or not?
The redesign of the department is going to be funded within the 9.4 billion.
That's what we were getting at.
Yes.
But although I think the question would be, at what expense?
Correct.
Yeah, and that's what you'll have to look at, you know, when you get the balanced budget and determine-
To be a miracle worker, there'd be no expense and yet you still pull it off, so.
Oh, Michael.
Go ahead, Alan.
Okay, I'm assuming over the next 30 days or so, we're going to be putting, looking in the townwide healthcare and benefits, but, you know, basically all the townwide funding that we're going to do, however we end up doing that over the next 30 days, because right now those wide items are blank. Especially like the health benefits, if, you know, if we go to, combined on that, we'll be making the adjustments.
Well, I, as I've said before, I'm waiting for direction from the board on that and I know that you have a meeting set up with the school committee later on this month. So I'm hoping that after that meeting-
That's one of the topics I'd like to discuss on the 25th.
To that, Sid Sleckman would have two agenda items we could enter and they, school committee, would enter two agenda items?
They've already had their, got their two.
Yep.
Okay.
So we have to decide on our two, but we-
We can talk about that a little bit later on.
I think those two are sufficient themselves.
Which two?
The two they chose.
Okay. But I think Alan has now requested that the-
But we can talk about that because we had that under-
Yes, we did. So let's move forward then.
Okay. So, there was a motion, I think.
To approve.
To approve, yes. Motion and second, we are in discussion. If there's no further discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Well-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, on a matter of principle on this, and I know it's not a huge amount of money, but, you know, I think I'm going to vote against.
Well, the question is not so much the number as, okay, because you're thinking you might like to pull $30,000 out of there possibly and put it somewhere else?
I don't know. I think we should leave some options open, I, you know.
Okay.
Just so you know, that $30,000 would, if you pulled that out, that would be the equivalent of putting $9,000 in the town budget. That's why I said it's not going to significantly change 9.4 million because we get 29% of that number.
Okay, so record that as four to one then, please.
The second item I have on-
Did she accuse herself?
No.
No.
She voted no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The second item that I have here is discussion of providing pay equality to non-union employees. And just as I've mentioned that I do not believe that we have any significant staff in our departments, you know, looking at surrounding towns, Carver generally pays less. And that's just a known quantity. We know that.
And you're talking department heads here?
Department heads and all town employees. We generally pay less than what our budding towns are. And I'm not trying to suggest that we change that because it is what it is and, you know, over time, we can look at doing that as a whole. However, when you look within Carver itself, what is important is trying to provide some level of parity between the different labor groups. And on the left side is what I'm showing is COLA increases and on the right side is COLA increases plus STEPS that certain departments have. What I want to call your attention to is that, this is looking at kind of a 10-year trend, is that the clerical union over 10 years has received about a 1.1% cost of living increase. And again, that's an average over those years. The DPW is a 1.1% increase. The dispatchers is a 1% increase and the police is a 1.1%. And again, this is cost of living increases. So those four labor groups are relatively consistent and again, that's parity within our community. School is obviously higher. That's showing a 1.8%. And, but now here's where you get to the non-union employees and this is whether it's department heads or whether it's non-unionized confidential employees, their average is 0.4. And that is, you know, more than half below what the other labor groups were getting. So I see that as somewhat of a discrepancy and somewhat of a little bit unfair in our community when you compare these groups together. And I'm not trying to single anyone out. I'm not trying to single any department out. I'm just trying to look at classes of employees. Moving to the right side of the table, when you, and the right side assumes that people are still step-eligible and they receive their step plus a COLA if that was given over those 10 years. You see the clerical averaged 3.1% with STEPS, DPW 3.1, dispatch 3.5 and police 5.1. Keep in mind, police have less STEPS, so that 5.1 really averages out to about a 3-point something as well. When you look at the schools, when their STEPS, because they get 5% or 12 and 1/2% for the STEPS, that's a 6.8% or a 14.3% annual increase based upon where they fall in there. Again, I want to focus on the last item, which is the non-union coming in at 1.8%. Again, half below what the parity is for the rest of the town employees, you know, and again, not trying to emphasize the school, but just the town. So that is what the data shows. And Sarah, to your point a little bit is, I don't believe that I can give you a balanced budget that corrects this in one year. Because we don't have that much new sustainable revenue. You know, our new revenue coming into for this fiscal year is 1.65% of new revenue. But I wanted to call this to your attention because I am trying to explore some alternative that doesn't correct the system, but at least provides some level of acknowledgement and some minor financial contribution to the one group that is half of what their closest peers are within town. And again, I'm not trying to compare Carver to any other town around us. I'm just saying within Carver, this is what's happening and to me, that's wrong.
Yep.
It's one thing for everyone coming into town and deciding to accept a lower paid position here in Carver, but you expect to be treated fairly compared to your other peers within the town. That's where I see again is the discrepancy. So I'm bringing that up because I'm trying to work on, again, some temporary solution that's not going to solve it, but something to at least acknowledge, assuming the board supports what I'm doing, that we need to address this.
So as we go through the budget process, we may see something coming in to try to begin to remedy this, is what you're suggesting?
Okay. Assuming that I don't, you tell me tonight you don't want me to do that.
No, I want you to go forward. The fairness is very, very important.
This is a good, this should be done. A long time ago.
Fairness.
Consensus is to do your miracle work.
All right, thank you on that. The next item that I have is the capital outlay proposed balanced budget. Now, as everyone recalls, through the capital outlay establishing their process two years ago, all departments put in their full request to the town administrator's office. Then from there, I individually meet with every department and understand what their requests are over this year and the next 10 years and what their priorities are. Then from, then I need to compare what revenue the town's going to have based upon what the expenses are and then propose a balanced budget. I will tell you that I was not able to balance the budget in this item and I'm going to call that out in a little bit as to why. So let me jump down the very bottom of the page and let's focus on the FY '17 column, which is the one in yellow. When you look at the red number, that's $1.6 million. That is our anticipated fixed cost for FY '17. So that's going to include the last payment for the library and the town hall bond of $173,000, payoff of existing leases of $279,000. And we're not going to do leases anymore because it's, we're just paying somebody else to borrow money from ourselves and we've got a few more years of paying those off. We have our short-term interest disclosure statement and financial line item. We have the 25-year reduction of debt service for the elementary school. This is the solar money, if you will, built into it. I have a line item, but nothing budgeted for FY '17 and '18 for the estimated debt service for the middle high school roof boilers and doors, windows that were approved last year at town meeting and also for the construction of the police station. The construction of the police station, the town will have to pay 100% for that. And the middle high school, we anticipate getting 50% reimbursement from MSBA. But I am showing that debt service coming online in FY '19 and that's an important year to remember. And then based upon our anticipated bonding of the $10 million for the fire station and the engines, we've laid out the debt service for that. So and that's what comes up to the $1.6 million. From there, we're anticipating $2.4 million of revenue this year going into our fund. And again, that's 67% of our target. But what I'm proposing here is that we had requests that exceeded $854,000. We can only afford $856,000. That's the fixed cost minus the revenue, which leaves a delta of $2,346. So in that column, what I am proposing, and I'm going to walk through these real quickly and again, this will be discussed in more detail with the capital outlay and then they'll be coming back with a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. The first item is for the DPW tractor with snow blower and sidearm mower. Then a one-ton dump truck with plow for $75,000. Now, that was actually initially requested in FY '19 from the DPW. And you see the arrows pulling it back. Well, let me tell you why. Is right now, historically, the town DPW, when they have equipment that's nearing its useful life, and because they needed 24/7 basically, they need fully operational equipment. They then give that to the school, who may use it once a day, once a week, but they don't need the, a full-blown new one-ton dump truck. They're fine with a used piece of equipment, but the piece they have right now is almost un-roadworthy. So they need to replace their equipment. They're more than happy to get a hand-me-down from the DPW. This just accelerates that hand-me-down to satisfy the school needs and then puts a new piece of equipment on the DPW line. And by doing it this way, now that piece of equipment we're giving to the school is going to be three years newer than it would have been if we waited the three years. But the school has a, has a need right now. Then we get into town hall painting the exterior, $40,000. We need to replace the asphalt shingles on the back of the North Carver Fire Station. If things are added this year that weren't in previous years, you see then in parentheses, it says new in capital letters. Again, we don't normally like to see new things because we want them to be programmed over the 10 years, but it happens. And this is one of the things that happened. Also, the firemen are looking to upgrade their kitchen and bunk rooms and they're willing to do all the work down at that station. But this would be to supply some of the equipment and supply so they can use their carpentry skills and upgrade that facility. And that's what the $15,000 is. From there, we get into the Atwood Home, replacing HVAC units. This is a new item. Again, the town took over managing this property this year. So in DPW facilities, they've analyzed that and believe these pieces of equipment need to be replaced. I have talked to the CPA committee, to the chairman, and this is an item that potentially could be funded by them, which is why it's, the source is CPA. Also note, when I have a K or an M past the number, that just identifies that it's other people funding it versus the capital stabilization and debt service. And it doesn't show up into the cumulative column down there, but it just identifies it as a placeholder. We're also looking at replacing the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department and that is shown at $220,000. Moving down, we get to cruiser replacement of $42,000. And then the next item is a police long-range strategic plan and needs analysis of the department and public safety needs in the town. This is the first step of trying to identify what the building needs are going to be in the town. So we first have to know where we're going, what our staffing is going to be, how we're going to be set up. Are we going to continue to use the Plymouth County jails versus our own jails for long-term holding? That being the case, that report would then dictate what type of, what demands are needed for new building. Once we know the demands, then we move into the next phase of starting the design of a new police station. The next item, this used to say school technology. And now it says townwide technology upgrades and recycling of CPUs. And the reason for that is that I think from a technology standpoint, we should be looking townwide as to what the infrastructure needs are and have a townwide plan. There are many times- There are many times where the school needs to have the newer computers, the more robust computers. However, there are some times when the town hall doesn't need to have brand-new computers in certain circumstances, such as some of the counter computers that run some of the data inquiry pieces. They don't have to be robust, they just need to be a terminal connect to that. So in my experience before is we always tried to get the school the newer computers and then have the ones they were replacing, as long as they were recyclable, put into the proper locations within the town hall and in other departments. Not to say some departments need, in town hall, need to have new computers on a regular basis because they're high users, but not everyone. So I've re-categorized this to try to show that it's more of a sharing component. The school did request $110,000 and, and I have mentioned all this to Scott Neef. But within the revenue standpoint and some of the other priorities, we couldn't do that. And I proposed $55,000. But also keep in mind that the, you just spent $45,000 to fund computers that were planned to be spent out of the capital outlay account. So really, net is that that $45,000 is technically still available and with the capital outlay committee and the board of selectmen in town meeting, we could potentially reallocate that $45,000 to satisfying their needs, you know, assuming you, you support their needs. Next item is the decommissioning of the wastewater treatment plant. This is a new item. And when I say new, we, it's really additional money. We had programmed last year $300,000 for building the new Title V system for the school. I think as everyone remembers, there was a push to build a new sewer treatment plant at $2 million and I just couldn't support that. And after talking with DEP and with Dave Segantoff, this was the proper solution. We do have some money in there for decommissioning the plant. The school originally requested $75,000. Last week, Dave Segantoff and Scott Neef and I met to go over that. And given the bids we received on the project, Dave felt that he doesn't need $75,000 additional, probably 25 is the more appropriate number and that's why that's shown at 25,000. From there, you have the football field press box at $67,500. There is discussions with the VOTEC school to see if that's something that they could supply, they could build. And I'm sure if they were willing to do the labor and put that together as a project, we could probably go to capital outlay and ask them to buy the materials out of their, their own stabilization fund, should we get a commitment to build it. But again, that's, that's looking for other people's support right now. The school was looking for the replacement of their track and football field at $2.9 million. And they have requested CPA funds for that. That's clearly something that is not something that can fit within the next 10 years of the capital outlay plan. Moving down, we have the repair of the high school gymnasium bleachers. This spring, summer, we're going to be replacing the floor in the gym. And this is a budget number to upgrade and do additional repairs to the bleachers that may be necessary once they're torn down. So that's programmed. The school requested $40,000 for the HVAC units on the second floor of their administration building. Again, just due to budget constraints, we couldn't fit the $40,000 in there, so that's been pushed off a year. There is a need to replace the carpet in the auditorium. That's the original carpet. I think every time people go in there for town meeting, you see how, how it's shown its age and also for any type of theater and other musical events, it just is, it's, it's pretty old.
Had it.
It's more than had it. Then we have replacement of a 71-passenger bus. And then finally, there was a request for $25,000 for digital archiving storage at central office. Again, given the financial constraints, there's so much revenue and there's so many requests, you still had to get a balance where the things go and that's how that, this was. So that's what's proposed in the FY '17 and I've been sending that to the capital outlay committee this week as well as the finance committee. I do want to, two other comments. The second is if you look at the available target funds, number in yellow going across, you know, this year we had $856,000. Next year, we're going to have $1.2 million because the town debt and some of the leases are being paid off. But then in 2019, FY '19, the third year out, that drops to 507. The reason that drops to 507 is that's when the new debt's going to come online for our middle high school, you know, roof repairs, boiler and doors and windows, of which we're going to get 50% from MSBA, plus that's anticipated when we may have debt come online for the new police station. Now that may shift a year, but it's happening. And whether or not it's 2019 or 2020, it's going to happen and we have to budget for that. So that's why you see a significant drop-off in FY '19. So as you look up FY '19, you see a lot of arrows pointing to the right because we had to defer those costs. So really what you have in FY '19 is the, the big and main capital project that you're going to be having is the replacement of tanker one in the fire department. And, you know, we need to be able to supply the water, to put out the fires and the, the tank has been programmed to be replaced in this year and since that's all we can afford that year, that's the big item. Moving over to FY '20 is you see the big item, which is completing the locker room replacement for the middle high school. That's $1 million, $1,72,000. And I have that highlighted in yellow because I'm demonstrating that that should be the priority project for FY '20. But with the other components there, that still shows a deficit of $589,000. So I'm showing an unbalanced budget, which is something I don't like to do. However, I am hopeful that our bonding is going to come in cheaper. I can reduce the bottom line down. I'm hoping that some of our projects are going to be coming in a little bit cheaper than we're budgeting right now. And by the time you get out four years from now, we may have saved that additional $589,000 through good physical management of what we have here. Or some other projects potentially could be postponed. Again, every year, we reevaluate this in the critical years, the current year, and then we do our best projections going out. So I do see this number moving, but I just wanted to alert people as to why that one's out of budget and how our revenue's gone down. And then you see the revenue jumping back up, 914, $1.1 million, $1.3, $1.5, you know, until we get back on target.
Are we using an assumption of the $55,000 in, as we look at these years ahead for the personal property new growth?
Yes, we are.
So that if we have a blip in some of those years, that also would change some of these numbers?
Correct. And if we get some more solar projects, which, you know, I'm actively trying to do is generating new revenue for the town, and I believe we will have some new ones, is that will also kick into this as well. But I can't count on those until they happen, which is why I know I'm showing a deficit, but I'm reasonably comfortable we'll have some solutions by the time we get to FY '20.
Alan.
Yeah, Michael. Have you gone ahead and been to discussions with the fire chief on where, have they heard on the current grant request for the SEBA? Because I know they put in for the grant, I don't know if they've heard back yet.
They have not heard back. You know, I will tell you, the police, the fire department puts in for a lot of grants and, you know, some of these things could come back as a grant, but right now I'm budgeting that it's not because the, the equipment needs to be purchased. And if we get so blessed that we get the grant down the road, then we can reallocate some funds.
Well, that's what we're getting at. Over the next 30 days, 45 days, we hear that they are going to get that grant for 200, for the SEBA. Could we then reprogram some of the stuff that you're putting off till next year and go ahead and get it done this year?
We can, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fire station update.
It's going up. Looks great. The wood's going up. They were shoveling the roof off today, the decking. No, the fire station, it's, everything is going along relatively as planned. There are no huge change orders. Everything is on budget, certainly with the grant that the chief Weston and, and Tom Walsh secured, that, that's going to help the bottom line when we get to that. But, you know, again, I just want to emphasize, you've got a great team managing that project and it's going along very well. Bill Herriman's just do a phenomenal job.
And we're still within budget.
Yes, we are.
Thank you. And update on if site visits are subject to the open meeting law.
Yes, we did hear back from town council and site visits are not subject to the open meeting law provided there are no deliberations that take place. I did meet with Mr. Bellman on that item.
What does, what does that mean, that no deliberations take place?
No decisions. It's defined, it's defined in section 18 of Mass. General Law, chapter 20, chapter 29, section 18.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So site visits occur on private property and the boards or commissions have the right to go inspect that. And they can talk to the owner and understand what's going on and ask questions, but they can't make any decisions, i.e. deliberations, on what should be done. It's really a data gathering component.
But are they allowed to share their opinions on the worthiness of the request? Or again, no decisions can be made, I'm just wondering to what extent they can simply ask questions, absorb it themselves and then wait to come back to be in session? Or are they allowed to?
Well, I think, I don't want to take, makeover, but I think that that is the understanding. It certainly is or was when I was a department head here. You can't say, well, what do you guys think? You're like, you know, no. You just look at it, if you have questions, you ask questions. But let me just quickly read the definition of deliberation. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. An oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business within its jurisdiction, provided however that deliberation shall not include the distribution of a meeting agenda, scheduling information or distribution of other procedural meeting, or the distribution of reports or documents that may be discussed at a meeting, provided that no opinion of a member is expressed.
Okay, so no opinion of a member can be expressed either. So it really has to just stick to the facts and wait till you get back in session before you start discussing what your impression was of what you saw?
Right. And what Greg had told the department heads years ago is, you know, if you have questions, that's one thing, but then you can't say, oh, well, you know, I like this project. What do you think, Suzy?
Okay. All right, good. That's, I think, the clarification we were looking for.
And then also, I'm going to be looking to, with your concurrence, is to have attorneys come in and provide an open meeting law presentation to, to the boards and to department heads, probably do one during the day and one in the evening. And I guess, given, I'd like to know what your feelings are, if these should be mandatory for all boards and commissions of the town? And if so, how you'd want to go about communicating that.
Maybe if someone hasn't been through it before to make it mandatory and then make it option. I don't know. It can't hurt to go through it again.
We haven't done it, I don't think, in a while. I can't remember. I know I've sat through a couple of them, but...
Coleman and Page came to the department head meeting several years back and did it for, for department heads so that they would be able to convey that to their boards and department, you know, committee members. But it's been a while.
I mean, our options, you can have a mandatory for every board commission members in the town. You could have a mandatory for at least one representative from every board or commission. Certainly the town department heads, we will make sure that they are included in that. But, and I need direction as to how you want to deal with your counterparts and other boards and commissions.
I feel that if you have a couple of options for attending, that it should be mandatory for everybody since it hasn't been done in a while.
I tend to agree with that. Let's, we don't do it that often and it certainly seems to be an issue that comes up so that let's, I don't know what we do. I mean, it very, very well may be we have someone that's out of town for, whenever we have them. I mean, so when we say mandatory, it's, you need to make every effort to be there, obviously. But yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make them mandatory. That's consensus?
As long as you make it after April 23rd.
Oh!
I believe you're a member of the school building committee?
You can't get away.
I might resign that, too.
You can still take papers out.
All right, so you have your consensus? Let's see. Board of Selectmen comment period. We'll start with Alan today.
Okay, first off, it's very good to see Helen back, back in good voice.
Double bonus points.
Also, a reminder, definitely keep the food pantry in mind and those that are less fortunate. And also, we're at that time of year of the town where, I like to think of it as a time to put up time. You always hear people complaining about the way this board is run and that board is run, or they don't like how this is done in town or that's done in town. Now's the time you can do something about it and I really hope people do. This is, I'm talking about, it's time to pull papers out for various positions in the town for the town election. Board of Selectmen, we have one position up. School has two positions that people can put in for. I'm not sure what the other boards are, but you can always check with the town clerk's office, Lynn Doyle. She'll be able to help you out on that. And I strongly encourage people, you know, you know, it's easy to sit back and find fault or complain, but you get more done if you go ahead and work and become part of the solution instead of just, you know, complaining about things. So this is the time where you can actually help the town out by running for these offices and become a member of these various boards in town. And I believe you have to March 8th, I think, to pull out nomination papers. But be sure to check with the town clerk's office and that's it.
Do you know the, the actual date for pulling papers this year?
Well, they're, they're open now to be pulled. I believe March 8th is the last date to return them.
To return them.
Right.
With the signatures.
Thank you. All right, Helen?
I don't have a thing tonight except that it's very good to be back and I apologize for missing the last meeting, but nobody would have wanted me here. So it's great to be back, except that I didn't hear the sad news in person that my comrade is not going to be running again. That would be you, Dick Ward.
I was kind of just off the cuff at that meeting.
I know. You got sorely missed.
Sarah?
Thanks. I just wanted to give, excuse me, kudos again to the DPW department, the Buildings and Grounds Department and the school departments, facilities people and custodial people. The report that this gentleman gave tonight on their performance, we, we're really lucky. It's a great bunch of people all the way around. They do an excellent job with not that many people. The streets today were, were beautiful and thank you, DPW, for using mostly sand because that keeps our, our well water clean. The second thing I wanted to mention was that in, in the event that people didn't know, the Council on Aging slash Atwood House on Lakeview Street and Tremont Street in the corner there also accepts donations for the Friends of Carver Animals. This time of year especially dry cat food, which doesn't freeze as easily as wet cat food and would be greatly appreciated. Friends of Carver Animals is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, just so you know.
All right, Mr. Ward?
My mind just went blank. I would like to reiterate what Alan is pointing out about people in the community applying or taking out papers or serving on a committee or a board. I look at it that everybody in our community should contribute some time to do something in terms of the town, like a board, a commission, maybe it's coaching, but you need, we need people to help out. We can't afford a town where we pay everybody. We are a small town. We have a lot of dependency on, on boards and committees and commissions and please consider joining or applying or running for a position. That is true. I would like to, I guess I'll keep the other thing I was thinking of till we get to the school. The food pantry, keep that... The food pantry, keep that in mind always. We have a very important weekend for us folks that have another, that we need to provide cards and all kinds of nice things for us, a good Valentine's Day. That's a wrap. Oh, I apologize to Helen, that you weren't realizing that I was thinking, I have a threat over here, that somebody is taking out papers and signing my name.
Well, I know he's been practicing your signature a lot.
And he said he's got 67 signatures already.
I just can't believe you're going to not run this time.
Well...
We are having a great time, and now you're bailing on us. Now!
I will say, before Ron cuts me off, no. This year, this past two years has been enjoyable as a selectman. Not that I felt everybody was going to agree with me, but I didn't feel like somebody was going to get me in the back, and I also felt that if I stumbled, somebody was going to help me out. And that's the way it did work. So I greatly appreciate this board, all five of you, all four of you folks. So, thank you.
You'd be greatly missed.
Ron, before you say something, can I just add something?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. When I said that the Friends of Carver Animals is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit group, what that actually means is that your donations are tax deductible, just in case people don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, Mr. Ward, we're already beginning to miss you in anticipation of your absence. It does not get you out of the shot put competition that we have been threatening for several years, so that that will be taking place and will be filmed on Area 58 Community Access Media.
Well, if I'm retired from the board, I'll have a little more time to work on that.
Probably groundbreaking for the new elementary school would be a great day to do that competition.
Right. I don't want to give him too much time to practice. But just speaking of Area 58, I will be getting an email out to members of the board and some members of the staff, with our, we're just about ready to go live with our new website. On this new website, you'll be able to go out and access an archive of selectmen's meetings, planning board meetings, basically any committee and board in town, school committee meetings that has ever been filmed, we have, we're going to have the backlog and the archive for, so you can go back and see them. And that's going to be true for the towns of Halifax and Plimpton as well. So what I'd like to do, we're just sort of finishing up our testing, I'll get it out to you folks, and if you could poke around and see what you think, and get back to us with any suggestions before we make it go absolutely live, I'd appreciate that. And other than that, does anybody want to know what happened in New Hampshire?
Um, yeah. Oh, you already found out?
I have, yes.
Oh, so you haven't been paying attention here?
No, I have been paying attention.
Okay, who won? Who won?
On the Republican side, Donald Trump was the winner.
Well, that's projected, correct?
Well, they've, most of the channels have now picked Trump on the Republican side, and Bernie Sanders on the New Hampshire side.
The Democrat side.
Now, watch how I just, nobody absolutely knows what I'm thinking right now. This is so good a progress. All right.
So the, anyway.
Now, this does not let you off the hook of moving along.
No, absolutely not. All right, moving forward. Approval that the maximum useful life of the fire department equipment, three new fire engines that are coming, for which $1,770,000 is being borrowed, is 11 years. I think this is a technical requirement that we have to make?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nobody even wants to question this, okay?
Well, no, I would like to point out that it's because of the way the bond laws are written, because basically Craig worked on a 20-year for the equipment, so even though it says here 11 years, expected lifetime of these engines is 20 years each.
Right. I just, I was going to make that point if you didn't, in case someone was worried that we were, you know, going to bond them for 10, and then a year later, we got to put in for new engines. No.
I think something that needs to be pointed out, Helen, is that one of those pumpers that we have now is, what, 23, 24 years old?
Yeah, and that's not even the backup, one of the backup, the spare is even 30 years, I think.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of life out of the pumpers that we've had.
We now need to approve of the election warrant for the presidential primary scheduled for...
To go ahead and vote? I mean, that would just...
I'm sorry, yes. Someone want to make a motion to approve?
I did.
We did.
Is there a second? Further discussion? Stop throwing me off with a discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, approval of the election warrant for the presidential primary scheduled for March 1st, 2016.
So moved.
Absolutely approved. Elaine, you can figure that one out. Is there a second? Okay. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Discussion of quarterly updates on audit findings.
Was it a request from my last meeting to discuss it at the next meeting?
That, oh, so basically, who would, if, basically, the auditor came in and made some recommendations and announced his findings, and I think we discussed the idea that it would be nice on a quarterly basis to sort of find out what sort of progress we're making towards that. I would think the town administrators should be capable of making those, providing those updates?
Oh, I would think so.
Yeah? Any other questions?
I mean, it's a miracle work.
And we could let him do it, like, when he wants to, when he's ready.
Yes, but trying to observe the quarterly.
I was just kidding. He doesn't have to do it tonight.
No. First quarter would be, you know, somewhere around May or June.
Update on the elementary school project?
The architects are working very hard and fast. Project managers are working on it and working the details. We did, I did get an email tonight from the superintendent that is pretty, pretty good. She needs, and the school committee and the school administration needs to be commended on their education plan, because the MSBA wants, or is going to use that plan as one of their model plans, I think, statewide. It's one of two elementary school plans that they're using. So that plan that led somewhat to our town getting accepted by the MSBA was crucial. And so, school committee, school administration, superintendent deserve kudos on that. Otherwise, maybe Michael has something that he could add to it?
No, I, that's absolutely correct. It was a very good education plan. MSBA called to see if we would approve releasing that. I didn't have any problem releasing that as an example to be used. So, as I've said before, they put together a good education plan, and we built the building around that.
You did tell them that they were going to use that as a model. We should get an extra two points.
I'm trying to get extra points wherever I can.
Five.
The, we are also anticipating estimates back shortly. The two estimating firms are reviewing the preliminary plans, and we'll be having those in March, and making appropriate adjustments to the project to keep it on target.
And our next building committee meeting is last week in February, I think, 22nd?
Yep. Yep. Okay. Discussion of the town administrator's evaluation process and timing. At our last meeting, Mr. Ward pointed out that there's a little bit of an inconsistency that while we move town meeting to be in front of the town election, so that we would have selectmen that participated in the entire budget process, that we might have a freshman select person that would be on the board, that would be being asked to provide an evaluation of a town administrator that they were just getting to know, and suggested that it makes, you know, good sense and is logical that we adopt a similar format and do the evaluation prior to the town election, so that, again, you have a selectman, select person that has had at least a year working with the town administrator. So, toward that end, I asked for a look back at what the wording was that we actually had, and what I went ahead and did was simply to change some of the wording, so that the board shall review and evaluate the town administrator annually 60 days prior to the town election. And then it sort of outlines the, what that process would be. One of the things that we added last year that didn't take place was individual meetings with the, that each board member should, after they've completed their evaluation, sit down one-on-one with the town administrator to review the evaluation and have a chance for some dialogue back and forth. So I proposed some dates here. March 1st to the 14th, we distribute and complete the evaluation worksheets. March 15th to March 28th, we take our individual evaluations and meet with the town administrator to discuss them, along with goals and objectives that we feel would be worthwhile for 2016, 2017. March 29th, we'd all turn the evaluations in for tabulation. April 12th, an executive board meeting to review the evaluation results and solicit town administrative feedback. We'd all would have had the results of the tabulation ahead of time, so we'll have had the chance to absorb everything. It wouldn't be the first time any of us would be seeing it. And then on April 26th, the public discussion of the town administrator's evaluation, as well as goals and objectives being set for 2016, 17, and the chairman would provide a written summary of the evaluation findings and 2016, 17 goals and objectives. So I just ask for...
And when is the election?
23rd?
I believe it's the...
23rd.
Oh, it is?
So does this affect the date? I mean, do you need to change that final date, or doesn't that...
No, I don't, I don't think so, because we're...
It's all done then.
The work has already been done. The work's been done at that point in time, so that, other than not having Mr. Ward here to provide his personal thoughts, he could attend as a member of the public that evening if he wanted to provide any evaluation thoughts.
You make it enough writing candidates.
Well, there is that. Is this satisfactory with the board?
Looks fine to me.
Okay.
Looks like it would make sense, yep.
All right, so that, can I just suggest, then, that we formally adopt this as our new procedure for the evaluation?
Is it on the agenda? Well, yeah, sort of.
Yes.
It is on the agenda. I'll make the motion to accept it.
But the dates obviously would change every year based on the actual results.
I'll second.
Is spread out nicely?
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And then we have the February 25th, 2016 joint meeting with the school committee at the school administration building. That'll be at 7 o'clock. Each board will be allotted two items to the agenda, and then we'll discuss future dates of meetings discussed at that time. They have requested that the DOR report, which hopefully we'll have by that time, be on the agenda, as well as the, it's not actually the cost cutting committee, it's the, actual name is the...
I don't know where the cost cutting came from. It's the Cost Control Committee that was approved.
Control Committee, yes. They listed the cost cutting committee, so, and from our board, I know Alan has mentioned the health insurance issue. Did, and Helen, I know you gave me the question on sort of school policy as far as who can or, it's really a broader question of the policy they have for who can or can't utilize, or what, under what circumstances do they say yes or no to the request for utilization of the facilities?
Right. I mean, we already know what the existing policy says, but I would like to discuss the situation that I was denied, and to avoid anyone in the town with a rightful cause to be denied in the future, like, is, you know, what in that policy needs to be improved upon that this doesn't happen again?
Is that okay with everybody? There's being two items. Alan?
No, I've got no problem with that being the second item. I do want to try to figure out, would we wait for maybe the next meeting, then, to start entering in discussions of townwide facilities?
That's what I was going to ask.
Uh, yeah, because I think...
Is that something I don't want to let...
I've got a special meeting on that, Alan. I would, I would think that will, that'll be a special combined...
I'd have no problem with a special meeting with that. Is it something I don't want that to languish? Because I think that's something we really need to put on the front burner and start discussing and reaching some consensus on.
So, but isn't the, wasn't the townwide facilities discussion one of the school department's requests?
No.
Okay, all right. So I...
Was the other or the school?
I agree.
They wanted the Cost Control Committee discussion and the DOR report.
Cost Control Committee.
I never even heard of the Cost Control Committee.
When we voted to the...
To have the committee.
The six people to have the committee, that if there are cost overruns, they would meet for the school building?
It wasn't on the agenda?
Now I've got, now I've got the...
So, if I could, that's right. I was just going to say, for Helen's suggestion, if we could make it a little broader than that, rather than, you know...
I think that's a specific, I think the broader is sort of the discussion of the school use policy.
Correct.
But I think that's a good example of wanting to know how that applied in that specific circumstance.
Exactly. Because it is, I do want it to be the broad picture, Sarah, with the policy itself, but that is just an example of the policy not being thorough enough. I mean, if everybody wanted to have that facilities discussion that night, because it is important, I don't mind putting it off, however, I think that's a lot of content for that night.
I like Ron's idea of having a separate meeting on that.
Yeah, to add that to...
There's a lot to that. I mean, you're talking about nuances, you combine them together, you're suddenly having to do...
That's going to be a lengthy meeting.
Union negotiations, because you've got two separate unions that need to be combined, so this doesn't happen overnight.
That's a huge issue.
You know, so, but I think, as you say, let's bring it out and let's decide. We've, what we've always said is, we're not necessarily going to do it, but we need to discuss it and find out if it makes sense.
You know, even if we decide to do it and everybody's on board, I don't see it getting done until for the FY '18 budget.
But it would have to be front and center to make that.
Exactly.
So, I agree with that.
So what are the two items?
Our two, the two items from the schools are discussion of the DOR report and the Cost Containment Committee?
Control.
Cost Control Committee relating to the school building project.
Containment.
And the two items for the Board of Selectmen would be the, where to place the townwide health insurance within the budget, line items, and the school use policy.
Correct.
So I will let the chair of the school committee know what our two topics are, so we can get an agenda posted, and have all our meetings posted, and be, not violate any open meeting law violations. And we do have to be careful. If that's what we posted on our agenda, we can't want it too far from that.
Can we fluctuate locations, just for a change of atmosphere?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I, you know, she asked me this time, I said, "We'll do it over there, but we certainly can be anywhere." But I think it's important to be sort of less formal, like, this is kind of a formal setting here.
But we could go downstairs.
Oh, sure, oh, no, absolutely. No, I agree. Yep, yep. Okay, so that takes care of that issue, then. The next item is the minutes of January 19th. It's the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of January 19th, 2016.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I need to abstain.
Okay.
That's when I was out sick.
Please take note that the next Board of Selectmen meetings are next week on the 16th, and then on March 1st, March 8th, and on March 30th.
Well, your schedule in front of you says March 16th, 25th, and 27th.
Well, I'm just looking at what it says here.
I'm just looking at that. I don't know what you...
I hate to say this, but I'm going to be away, I'm not going to be able to make March 1st with all these changes.
All right.
I hate to do that.
Elaine, help me here. I'm looking at the list that's on the, on the agenda versus what you gave me.
Well, we're meeting, we just discussed meeting with the school committee for February 25th, so...
Right.
That's, but that's missing from the list of meetings on the agenda.
Well, okay, well, that's because those are pure board, I think these are the pure board business meetings, as opposed to...
Just selectmen, yep.
For instance, February 27th is the day we sit with all the, all the budgets. I think there's a distinction. I think these are our regular session meetings that we're going to be having.
Okay.
The school committee meeting's an extra meeting that's independent of our regular sessions, as is the February 27th meeting.
But there's still public meetings, I just...
Oh, sure.
Think it's good to make that distinction.
When did the March 1st meeting get put in there? Because I've never had that.
The first Tuesday in March.
Yeah, I think it's the first Tuesday in March, so we meet the first and the third Tuesday of the month.
This is what you had decided at the last meeting? That's where these dates came from. You had set some Wednesday dates, and then I think you changed them to Tuesdays.
Yeah, that's where I got confused.
Right. Cause it was confusing because some of the, I, I was thinking they were Tuesdays, and when I went to put them on my calendar, they were Wednesdays. All right, so I'll work off of this. The next, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting, uh, in the month of February, tonight, the 9th, and then also the 16th in our regular sessions.
And the 25th and 27th.
Then on the 25th, we'll have our meeting with the school committee. More of an informal meeting over at the school, uh, the Makepeace...
Yeah.
...center. On the 27th, we'll be right here at 8:30 in the morning as we go through our budget sessions. Uh, and then our regular scheduled meetings in March will be the 1st, the 8th, and the 30th. Uh, so an extra meeting there in March because we're coming into the budget season.
Uh, Wednesday. That's a Wednesday, yeah.
Which one, the 8th?
I, I had everything else recorded except for the, um, March 1st and...
And then April 5th and April 11th. And then, um, we're gonna have to add one more meeting based on our list there. Is it the, oh, April, okay, this makes it a little difficult here. Well, no, we can have the exec, we'll have to have the exec, executive board meeting.
What's the second meeting in April?
April, we have the 5th.
19th.
The 19th. Do you wanna move your public discussion to, of the town administrator's evaluation to that meeting?
Is that, uh, yeah, actually, my intention was for, to be the regular scheduled second meeting in April. So the 5th, I'm assuming is the first Tuesday.
Yep.
The 11th is the...
No.
Town meeting.
Town meeting, so that the, um, what would be the date for the...
The 19th would be your second.
19th, all right, so let's change that to April 19th instead of the 26th.
Okay, so April 5th, April 11th, April 19th?
Yep.
You had the 12th?
I had the 12th. The 12th is, the, the, the 12th is the Tuesday night. So we'll be getting together that Tuesday night after town meeting simply for the purpose of executive session.
Okay, so April 5th, 11th, 12th, 19th?
Yep. Then it's the election. So Dick, you will be here for the, uh, for your comments for the town administrator?
Yes.
Yeah, excellent.
The, uh, the March 1st meeting, we're meeting on the 27th, that's Saturday, and then we're meeting on March 1st and 8th.
Oh, thank you.
You thinking the 1st might not be necessary?
May not be necessary.
That's the one you can't make, Helen?
Yeah.
I mean, I, we can...
Just a lot of meetings, don't feel bad.
Yeah, I, I...
I mean, there's no reason we probably can't take up anything urgent if we're scheduled for the 27th.
We can add it to the agenda, do it at the end there.
We can add to the agenda if there's something that needs to be addressed, otherwise we're getting together on the 8th.
All right, so let's cancel the, the 1st, March 1st.
Okay.
And then we do have the 27th. Should there be anything to come those up?
Okay, so a quick review after these additional changes. We'll be meeting again on February 16th in regular session. February 25th, we have our meeting with the school committee. February, the...
27th.
27th, we'll be meeting right here all day, uh, for, uh, the budget reviews. Then we'll be meeting March 8th, right here, March 30th, which is a Wednesday. Then April 5th, our regular meeting in, uh, in April. Then April 11th, we'll be meeting at the auditorium at the, at the schools for our annual town meeting. On the 12th, we'll be getting back together here for an executive session, for the review of the town administrator's evaluation. And then our, uh, normal second meeting in April, which will be on the 19th. Everyone have that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Uh, one day special license council on aging on...
We approve.
March 17th. Is there a second? Shall we say what it's for?
St. Patty's Day.
It's St. Patrick's Day dinner.
The St. Patrick's Day dinner?
Yeah.
All right, well, I think the public has a right to know. Not everybody's up to date on their...
Yep, yep. It's a good ad for the council on aging.
Tickets are available.
It's good.
Usually go with a gray brisket, which is the better type of brisket to get. Uh, was there a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Approval of the Old Home Day race on July 30th, 2016 at 8:00 a.m.
Move we approve.
Second.
It has been approved by the police chief, fire chief, and the EMS director. Further discussion? There being none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Is there need for an executive session this evening?
Short one.
All right, well, then, does someone wanna make a motion to go to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions?
I'll make that motion.
And for non-union negotiations and with all non-union personnel not under contract, and strategy for litigation, and for purchase, exchange, sale, lease...
I second Helen's motion.
...of real estate that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and to reconvene in open session.
We already got a motion.
Seconded. Further discussion? This calls for a public vote. Alan Dunham?
Alan Dunham says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Ron Clark says aye.
Dick Ward says aye.
Helen Maroney says aye.
All right, we're now in executive session. We will take a three-minute break.